Good morning, calling to order the Connecticut State Board of Education Legislation and Policy Development Committee. First order of business will be our approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from March. Could I have a motion on those?
I move that we approve the minutes of March 4th and June 17th.
Second.
Any changes or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second set is ours from our last meeting, Jessa. Who did that one?
That was March, I mean June 17th.
June 17th, may I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second, second changes. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, then we'll move on to. Then we'll move on to.
There's an echo.
Yeah, there is an echo.
Yeah, if anyone who's not speaking, I know it makes it a little more complicated, but if you could mute your mics and then unmute, that will help, I think, with the echo.
Okay, what I'd like to do, I know you now, the board members have had the bylaws and if we could have just a discussion on what will, maybe what I should tell you is go just review what the board was looking at previous before we went into it, when we got into issues of not having a quorum. And then we didn't have a forum to approve them to bring them to the full board. When we looked at the bylaws, we had some questions basically on where our meetings take place, if you notice in the bylaws, we are in our bylaws, we are supposed to have a meeting that takes place in the evening. And off grounds are where we typically meet in Hartford, and that was questionable by the committee. And when I say by the committee, this goes back well over a year. And public participation. We've had discussions on that limiting to, we say it's a limit to three minutes, but we've gone, and of course, this isn't really an issue now because everything's in paper. But we have gone back and forth with some people going on as long as 15 and others being told they only have the three minutes. And how we want to address that moving forward in those bylaws. So those are two of the things that were addressed way back with this committee. And we never really got to them, and so that's why it sort of sat on as an agenda item. Though we are out, and I know Jessa, you've been looking into whether or not we need to renew them. It's something perhaps if we have a retreat, that's something we can discuss as the full board. But I wanted to get from any board members if they have any particulars, as you reviewed the bylaws, any particular things that you would like to see? Or maybe you question that we should also include when it goes to the full board. Bob?
Yeah, the probably the references to the the technical high school system in there probably need to change because we need to change the name. And also bring it, bring them in compliance with the latest legislation in terms of who appoints the superintendent and things of that nature. So I can get with Jessa and go over, go over those if that's okay.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? I know for a lot, for most of you, it's a new document, but I didn't know if there was anything that stood out to any of you that maybe you wanted to discuss. Malia?
Yeah, I don't necessarily want to discuss anything, I just wanted to, with appreciation for you, highlighting the evening and offsite sort of meetings and, and the, just both of the issues that you raised, because those are actually the the two that stood out for me. Absent any conversation with anyone else, so I look forward to that.
Okay. So I think that will conclude that and we'll move on to Charlene and John and know that we do plan to have this part of our retreat. And certainly if that does not occur, it will be something that the bylaws will be on their regular board agenda to discuss as a full board. Moving forward. So at that, I'll turn it over to you, Charlene, good morning.
Good morning, great to see the board members, all your smiling faces, the beautiful grid here with all of you on it. I'm not going to take time, I know we have a packed agenda, I really just wanted to introduce John that I'm sure most of you have known, John Frazanelle is a Division Director, Health Nutrition Family Services, Adult Education, always a mouthful. And Kim Traverso, who is our School Counselor extraordinaire and our person responsible for our SEO work and all that. But today, talking to us about our school council guidelines and John giving us, setting the stage for us with some legislation and work that we need to do, so I'm going to end there and turn it over to John.
Great, thank you, Charlene, everybody can hear me okay? Okay, great, thanks. So the work, thanks for having us to discuss this this morning, it's really an important topic that we've been working on for quite some time, to work actually on the development of a comprehensive school counseling framework. Predated the legislation that passed last year, but last year in 2019, the legislature passed an Act Concerning Guidelines for Comprehensive School Counselor Program, which required that the State Board of Education in collaboration with a statewide association that represents school counselors, adopt guidelines for a comprehensive school counseling program. It further requires that the guidelines ensure that all students have access to a comprehensive school counseling program. And that provides academic, social, emotional, and post-secondary and career readiness programming with a certified school counselor. So in collaboration with the Connecticut School Counseling Association and others, the department has developed the Connecticut Comprehensive School Counseling Framework, which you have, a copy of was sent out yesterday. Which is really the department's answer to the comprehensive school counseling program identified in the legislation. Back in 2008, the board approved the guidelines for school counseling programs, and those guidelines really began the work of helping to evolve school counseling from what we're referred to as a responsive service provided to only some students, college-bound students to, and really an active program to support every student. The entire evolution of school counseling occurring over the last decade has really reflected the changing and complex needs of school, of students. We all recall what I refer to as the historical work of guidance counselors. Traditionally, helping students to select classes throughout their high school years and helping them apply for colleges. But the name change from guidance counselor to school counselors isn't just symbolic, it really reflects the need to support the whole child in those areas, academic, post-secondary. But also, more importantly, in the area, in the area of social-emotional learning and support. Addressing social-emotional behavioral mental health of students has, has been a focus of the department for some time now, and also of the board, I might add. And given the environment and circumstances facing schools and families and students right now, we believe that the needs have never been greater. So the the framework provides really a roadmap to standardizing school counseling programs across the state. The design is really meant to help school counselors customize programming based on student needs and help students overcome barriers to learning. It is being developed with an equity lens and ensuring cultural competence. But it really is a whole child approach that focuses on those three areas. And the work of school counselors and the implementation of the framework is, is really planned and implemented K through 12 and not just in grades nine through 12. It works with principals and student support professionals working as a team, mental health providers, families, and others to support students. So it's also intended to be an essential part of the process, not, not just an aside. The implementation of the framework really expects every student to be served and supported equitably based on data, data decision-making. So as we know, the use of data is critical to understanding the needs of students and addressing their social-emotional and academic work. The work really assists students in meeting academic standards and helping them be prepared for college career and really be really contributing members of society. So what's the purpose of it? So it really has benefits throughout the system. Through comprehensive school counseling, students experience improved academic performance and success, better social relationships, improved decision-making and problem-solving skills, and a better understanding of their post-secondary options. Families are included in this and families have a tendency to receive more information about, about these resources and are more connected to schools. Administrators benefit from emotionally healthy students, a more positive school climate that's conducive to learning and meeting strategic goals of districts, including student achievement and parental participation, dropout prevention, and of course, post-secondary success. So we, we're here to hear your thoughts and input at this time when social-emotional learning and the need for enhanced student support services is arguably never more needed and more critical right now. And then what our plan is, is at a future board meeting, we'll be asking the board to approve and adopt implementation guidance for, for the framework implementation in schools. So not just the adoption of the document, but more so that the board will be vocally in support of comprehensive school counselor programs and really, really endorse this important work. So Kim Traverso is here, you know, she's our school counseling guru and also has, does a lot of work on social-emotional learning and school discipline, you've seen her before. So she's going to walk us briefly through the components of the framework. Kim? You're muted.
Good morning, everyone, thank you for having me, and John, thank you very much for that great introduction, and Charlene. Yes, I'm very excited about the school counseling guide and framework. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the framework and what does it look like. So first, I would like to tell you that the framework consists of four core components. One is called define, the second is build, implement, and monitor, the third is deliver, and lastly is assess, act, and announce. So the Connecticut framework is largely modeled after the American School Counseling Association national model. Also, I would like you to know that this document has been vetted by over 60 people in the state of Connecticut, that includes participants as far as the Connecticut School Counseling Association and also the Counselor Educator and Supervision organization, which is overseeing basically the higher ed for pre-service students in school counseling. So I would like to start with just going through briefly the actual core components and describing what we've done and what that framework actually looks like. So let's start with define, I'm sorry, let's start with define. So define has been divided up into three sets of standards. And so there are student standards, which we have always had, but we made adjustments to those in order to accommodate more SEL alignment. Secondly, we are also have school counselor standards. And thirdly, we always have our code of ethics. So those are the basic foundation builders of the actual framework. And building off of that, we have what the second one is called is build, implement, and monitor. And this is to be delivered effectively through the framework by looking at how well things are operating within the context of the framework. And also having measurable outcomes, looking at our performance. So we've never had that before, we never really had anything put into a document or a framework to hold school counselors accountable, and that goes back to that whole story around guidance counselors versus school counselors because the training is so different now. And so the accountability and the high stakes, it's much higher now. So looking at that, this is basically a guiding document for them to be able to build a program if they have to build it from scratch. And if they don't have to build a program from scratch or a framework from scratch, then they can actually then start from the implementation, but look at the implementation science of how well they're implementing the framework. And then make the adjustments that are necessary in order to have a better prepared framework that's going to support students. And that's basically about fidelity. The next piece is deliver, and this is really the core piece also of the framework. Deliver talks about direct and indirect services, so let me explain that just briefly. So direct services is any time that we're dealing directly with students. So when we're having a one-on-one conversation or counseling session, if we are in the classroom and we're doing tier-one supports around curriculum and lesson planning. So that would be an example of direct services. Indirect services is anything that impacts a student that we may have to deal with in order to provide more supportive services to that, to that student or student. So for example, parent-teacher conferences are a big thing for indirect services. We may have student assistance team where we have a student who's having more tier-two, tier-three concerns. So now we have to look at other structures and other interventions to support that child. So really, that, that's really the difference between indirect and direct. With that being said, this is when our standards really come in for our student standards is because we actually have now designed within the context of this framework, a multi-tiered system of support. And so all students will get the curriculum, lessons, universal. And then we will, based on that data, what is our decision rule to decide on what has to happen in tier-two and tier-three? So for example, for tier-two, we would have groups for students. So if they all have a common theme that's happening based on the needs assessments and the data, then we can design groups and individual sessions with students in order to address these particular needs. This also talks about student advisement and counseling and also student appraisal. And lastly is the assess, act, and announce. And this is where that accountability piece comes in. So we are basically now embedded into the model is looking at how well are we doing each year annually? But in addition to that, it aligns to our evaluation system. So the school counselors evaluation system, based on their SLOs and their IEDDs, we are now actually incorporating that into this model or into this framework so that it aligns to that model so that we can even look at school counselors better and say, okay, this is where your strengths are, these are some areas of improvement. And the, and this is what we would like to see happen in the years, in the next year to come with your students as far as stressing social-emotional needs, school discipline, school attendance, any of those things that we can actually look at data and make an impact on that data. So I'm going to stop here and see if there are any questions and.
Kim, could you just, you did the acronym SLO and IEDDs, could you just explain those please?
Oh, yes, of course, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. So SLOs are student learning objectives. So a student learning objective is a broad goal for each and every, so every single teacher, every single support staff member has a student learning objective, and usually there are two. And it's based on the evaluation system. So for example, I may have a goal of, I will decrease suspensions by 6% by the end of 2020, 21. And I can even make a more of a focus on that, I can actually look at Hispanic students or Black students. I can actually define it, really define it, and then have that as my goal for the year. And with that, I have what they call IEDDs, which is the indicator for, I'm going to forget the acronym, indicator for, can someone help me out? Wait a minute, hold on.
It's been four years. Individual goal, what's the, oh, I don't know the N?
Okay, and I got it. I have to always write it out because, you know, this, this concussion thing still exists a little bit here, so you have to bear with me. It's the indicator for academic growth and development.
Okay.
So, thank you. So with that being said, I, you can break that down by a target. So for example, I have this broad goal, right, my SLO, but my IEDD will focus on really what I want to do. So remember when I said I have this broad goal of suspension? Well, now I'm going to break it out because my kids who are in ninth grade, it seems that it's impacting more of my Hispanic students. So I'm going to have a separate IEDD to address that particular issue. So I'm really taking this deep dive into the data. Then my second IEDD may be my sophomores, African-American, Black students are having a high risk of suspension. So I'm going to have an IEDD to concentrate on that. So I have divided or subdivided my SLO into those particular areas because not all are the same, and we're talking about not equality, but we're talking about equity.
Yeah, Kim, the biggest piece of the plan is to get into those SLOs, which I think is so important for many of our districts. I mean, our teachers have been embedded in for a lot longer than probably a lot of guidance counselors because it was unsure really how to put, I think, the guidance personnel into those. So I think that's really good that that's in there and really explainable for, for districts to see. And all I couldn't help but think was what a time to have the added SEL in a document than, than now. So, any comments, mothers?
I just wanted to stop for a second, if it's helpful, Chair Random, to suggest that, just to clarify for, for the committee, I don't know if this was done in an instance where I wasn't around, but exactly how we approach this kind of document. You know, my understanding was that today we were going to have some conversation about any suggestions or comments. But just to clarify that we would ultimately be asking this committee to confirm that they want to move it forward to the, the full board. And, you know, we're not necessarily asking that today, depending on what the comments and thoughts are. But one of the things that would be helpful is to hear if there are any sort of big picture suggestions before we move this to the full, to the full board.
I guess that was what I was going to ask Charlene too, is when did you anticipate this going to the full board? Is there a time period that you'd want to so that this committee could take a vote perhaps at our next meeting to bring it forward?
And that, that's the plan for the next meeting, and as John indicated, there's this big document, but we will develop something more concise, which would be kind of the board's support for this larger implementation document. And so you'd be able to see that, but we wanted to come to you with kind of the background today, get any thoughts you have, as that will inform us with the document we'll put in front of you for, for approval to move to the full board.
Okay. Bob?
Because, you know, I read through this and it was like you had to have super people to do this, man, you got heavy lift. And a lot of responsibility and, and being placed on the school counselors. I had three thoughts, one was, is this, you know, the staffing levels? Is there, are there enough counselors to be able to actually do this? It's not, it's not a, not easy, it's pretty, it's very intensive. But do, you know, are we asking people who, to do something that they don't have the time to do or not? And I don't know the answer to that. The, so it's like, what's the counselor to student ratio in a school, or what should it be? Are we setting a guide, are we setting guidance with that in terms of doing this? Because in order to do this, what, what kind of staffing do you have to have? The other thing that, it, it does talk about collaboration to some extent in the document with other, other members of the school staff, but I wonder if that should be a little stronger in there? It, because you can't, the school counselor can't do this all by themselves, they've got to have a, you know, as Aaron was saying, you want those learning objectives to be shared between the, the teacher and the classroom and the, and the counselor in some way, but how do they collaborate? Those are, those are the couple of thoughts I had.
And I'll just, if, if okay, I'll just comment briefly, and those, those are sort of the discussion around both of your questions are the same in that we, we really have, we rely on superintendents based on the needs of their school, right, to conduct an assessment of the needs of their school and the needs of their district, to how they use their multidisciplinary staff and how, how they put resources for all of the student support personnel in the school to meet their needs.
And that, you know, that's a great question, Bob, and I was making a note as we were talking about this. I think every session, every legislative session, there's a proposal to add more counselors to, to the roles. And that comes up all the time. Now, we are having very active conversation with our sister agency, DSS. We are truly exploring, as we're looking at behavioral health issues, we're exploring with DSS how Medicaid funding could potentially be deployed and leveraged to pay for these professionals in schools. So we're having that active conversation now. My understanding is that there are no states doing that well, and of course, that just says, those in Connecticut can pioneer. And so we are doing that because we recognize how important it is. So that, that is active conversation that we're having right now.
Yeah, and Bob, you bring up a good point as far as the collaboration goes, because some of our larger high schools, some of these guidance counselors have loads of, you know, 300 plus and closer to 400 students on their caseload. When I was reading the piece of collaboration, I was thinking that so many of our, our districts have ninth-grade teaming. And very often, there's a guidance counselor assigned to that team. So there's their collaboration because it's generally, they'll have an SLO that incorporates all those teachers on the team. And so that's a better, a better model, but not something that can be sustained in most of the schools. So counselors are, are needed, as Charlene said, and very often, it's not, not something that comes about.
Right, and we have, there's, what's the ratio, Kim? I know that, we know Connecticut's ratio, and what's the recommended ratio?
The recommended ratio is 250 to 1. Connecticut is about 440 to 1. But I have to be honest with you, is that, that's a little misguiding, the second number. And the reason why is because if you look at our elementary schools, we don't have a great deal of school counselors in elementary. And so when you really look at the high school level, it is actually on the average about 271 to 1, which is not a bad number. National ratio is 250. So I, I think it's not to be, you know, and I've had these conversations with both of my bosses. And we really believe that it's based on need, not based on a, like a, a national ratio model. And, and the reason why is because that, that's not really research-based, to be perfectly honest. And so we, we would rather for districts to look at their need and assess that way as far as how many counselors they think that they need. And just so that you know, in this, in this guide or this framework, we have planned for situations where the ratios are really extremely high or really extremely low. For example, like in our rural school districts, you know, we may have one school counselor for the entire school. And whereas in our urban districts, we may have a great deal of counselors in the high school, but not a lot in the middle school. So we have made adjustments within the plan or the framework to accommodate that and give them a better plan of action on how to address those particular issues. But I, I do totally agree with you about the collaboration piece, and that is embedded throughout to ensure that they are collaborating with teachers, that they're collaborating with families, and they're especially collaborating with their mental health providers that they work with.
Any other, Malia?
Yeah, well first, I just applaud the development of the, of the document. And, and as you said, Kim, you know, it's the, the first real framework to be able to, to provide comprehensively across the state and, and hold, hold folks accountable to, which we have not had before. And so I really am appreciative of this step in this direction. It, my question is more sort of a, a twist on, on the conversation we've just been having, and I really appreciate, Kim, the comments that you were just providing in terms of the context of what does this actually look like in Connecticut in terms of, you know, ratios, et cetera. And so what I want to know is, do we have a sense yet in terms of what might be the lift for, for, you know, the districts across the state to be able to implement the framework? Because not everything is, you know, not, not everyone is starting from ground zero, right? I mean, we shouldn't act as though this is the first time we're introducing school counselors into schools, right? So do we have, do we have a sense of sort of what, what that lift is? How challenging might this be for, for districts or particular districts?
Yeah, I actually have been working very, very closely with the Connecticut School Counseling Association, which has over 700 members. And they're all school counselors working in the field. And I just want to also add that, you know, this framework has already been around. This, this is, the framework was designed in 2008. We're just actually. We're just actually making it better and having it evolve that, and it's addressing these particular areas like cultural competency and also addressing, which I think is a very big thing, is multi-tiered systems of support. So those were really the two big heavy lifts, I would say, in regards to that, because the majority of the Connecticut counselors are already implementing some type of framework. And this framework also, just so that you know, is very flexible. We did that purposeful because we wanted people, depending on what their situation is in their schools, depending on who the school leadership is, we wanted them to be able to have that flexibility so that it can actually work in tandem with the mission and the vision of a school or a district. With that being said, we we do have a pretty good idea of where everyone is falling on that continuum. And so the thing that we have talked about, or I should say, the Connecticut School Counseling Association has talked about is really providing professional learning and technical assistance. So one of the ideas, I can just sort of throw that out, and this is not coming from the State Department, but this is coming from the association, is that they have regional corners where they have VPs. And through those regional corners, they're going to actually develop and provide the professional learning around the guide to those different regions. And so they'll probably do more of an overview first and then a more in-depth, and then actually breaking down the standards. And then I would think the other piece would be the core components and alignment on the continuum for multi-tiered systems of support.
And so just briefly, I'll just add that, so the first question, do we have enough school counselors to implement this is question number one. But the other question is, are the school counselors who are working in the field, are they implementing this kind of work? Or are they, are they sort of continuing with an old school model of guidance counseling? And so that's, that's addressed in the framework as well.
And I think, John, that's going to be the, that's going to be the key point is, you know, because we do have so many high schools that are already in this type of framework and doing wonderful work within it. It'll sort of be a refresher course for them, so to speak. But we also have those, too, that are, you know, it's just, just dealing with the kids going to college and what courses you're going to take and having to deal with any kind of trauma that comes along on any given day, and that's really all that they do. And so we really need to change that. But I think most of our high schools are going in a good direction. So this document will be very helpful for them. And that association is very active, I know that that you spoke of, Kim. They're very, very busy and do a lot of PD for a lot of guidance counselors. So that's nice to have as well. So Charlene, how would you like us to do? Would you like us to send you any other comments other than the ones you've heard today? And then perhaps bring this back to us for a vote and then to the full board next meeting?
Yes, that's the exact plan. So I know you got it just yesterday, so we apologize for that. We have a few things going, so please let us.
I can't be.
So please feel free to send your thoughts, our questions directly to us, and we'll follow up and bring something back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So we will now move on. Adrienne, you're up next. And for the board, some part of this discussion is going to be some of those documents that Jessica had sent you previous to last month's board meeting, a lot of statements from the board that will be sort of put into this discussion about what we want to do with them as we have this discussion on racial justice and equity. So Adrienne, I will turn it over to you.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to give a brief introduction. We had conversations about adding this to the agenda as a topic of conversation and to try to give some direction to our conversation today and potentially conversations in the future. We identified these two items that are on the agenda. So the first is to discuss updating some of those prior position statements that I'd sent around, as Chair Benham just mentioned. And Dr. Wood is going to be our our lead in conversations about updating and potentially combining prior position statements to come into, you know, in line with with the position of the board at this time and also with change in context. And then we also had discussed, there was a legislative proposal related to establishing a system, a system framework to help address achievement disparities. So for those of you who were engaged in the committee at that time, one of the legislative proposals that went forward to the legislature, but, you know, obviously was not acted upon, was a concept that was proposed by the commissioner and now his special advisor, Chris Clouette, who's also on, is working on, to provide sort of a a health systems check to to boards that will help to identify where they may need more support with an eye to providing support to address those achievement disparities. So I just wanted to give you sort of a big picture as to why those are the two items under this topic. And Dr. Wood, I will turn it over you as a starting point to bring us up to date as to where we were. My understanding is that there actually had been prior discussion about making some updates to these position statements and that that was in the context of some statewide issues over reenactments in particular. But of course, this conversation can expand beyond that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wood. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Jessa. I guess really the best way to look at this is, when I was given this task by Desi, Deputy Commissioner Naismith, what he really wanted me to do was take a look at what we had already put out there around the agency in way of how to communicate what our priorities are. And what he wanted me to do was just kind of review those things and take a look at it and see if there anything that really stood out that needed to change. Based on my review of the document, I didn't really see anything that required any substantial changes. But what he really wanted to know, well, what was the board's position around this particular issue? And what types of things they would like to include in this position statement? So that when we begin to communicate with the districts, we have a clear message about what our agency's priorities are and how we're going to be able to best assist the districts in doing that. So I guess really at this point in time, I'm assuming everybody had an opportunity to take a quick look at it. In general, I would probably say that this document has been a living document probably for the last six or seven years or so and various iterations of it. And I think the language that we used when it was first authored are pretty much the same type of language that we like to use now. One of the things with the position statement is, it clearly articulates what the board's position is around this. And then we also have another document that really speaks to the educators in the districts and what some of their roles are as it relates to being able to create an atmosphere where we're looking at things in a cultural perspective. And given today's timeframe, I think it's probably no better time than now if to say last time wasn't better, but definitely now, given all the things that are going on, is that we really like to be able to communicate with the districts and provide them with the resources that they need in order to really help them do the things that they're going to do to address some of the conversations and the concerns that they're going to have throughout the course of not only this school year, but the years coming up, years after that as well. So that's all I really have to say, just kind of a general framework, because the deputy commissioner really wanted me to open it up to really hear what individuals had to say so that I can look at that feedback, provide that feedback and include it in the document that he presented to me.
Any board members want to, Malia?
Yeah, so I I almost feel like we, you know, collectively need this as a, as an introductory sort of call to action of the board of of what is, you know, how do we want to come out on this? And and so I'd really like for this conversation to be more than just some quick comments in this particular meeting and maybe figure out how we really incorporate this into the retreat. What I would really hate to see is that this is just an opportunity for us to refresh some documents and make sure that they're posted somewhere where everybody has access. That feels like it's serious disservice to the students and the people of the state of Connecticut, especially during this time.
Malia, just so that you know, we, our intention was that it would be part of our retreat. And it was really one of the reasons we were pushing, and hopefully we will have had that retreat, because we thought this was really important, especially before we start our planning for our next five-year plan. So this was, the sole purpose really was for us to look at the statements, see if any updating, obviously some updating is needed on, and more so even to combine some. Some of them, I don't think they all need to be separated at this point. And some of them are quite, you know, much older than others.
Well, and just on behalf of the agency, it also will help us to ensure that there are action items attached to those. So I I hear you on that, and I just want to confirm that it's not that the action of updating the statements is the action item, but by us confirming the board's positions, you know, on these items and kind of incorporating an updated statement, it allows us at the agency to use that as a leaping off point for action items.
Can I just jump in? And I know Deputy Commissioner Naismith isn't here on the phone. And thank you, Adrienne, having kind of shepherded some of these statements in the past. I just wanted to echo, I know what Malia said. We oftentimes, you know, the most recent position statement the board approved was the one in school discipline and disproportionality. And we really use those as a backdrop to the work that the agency is doing. And so just for this this body to know that we're now working with everything that has happened, right? We recognize students were learning from home and had a front row seat to all the things that were happening around us. And I'm needing to still process that. How do we prepare our educators as kids are coming back to be able to have those conversations? And I'm now actively working with CERC, the State Education Resource Center, to put together a series, a kind of an equity series, that educators could avail themselves of. So something like this position statement really is a backdrop to the active work that we're able to say, and, you know, by the way, this is the board's position, and here is the department is acting on on the board's behalf to do that. So echoing the fact that this is active and not just something on the website that we want to get there is, isn't that a great statement? But that would put great action around. I just really wanted to to share that.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I, I don't have sort of the the insight into sort of what the retreat agenda is shaping up to be. So I appreciate the the context, the context. So, so for me, looking at the the documents, and I think not completely having the bigger context, it's sort of hard to to provide feedback other than just to say, I, I, I look forward to a broader conversation with the full board about this and what we want these, I don't even want to say a refresh statement, what we want the, our, our, our position now, today, this year, to be. And rather than, because I I kind of feel at the moment a little hemmed into previous boxes and want to figure out what that new box is for us to move forward with.
Anything else from any of board members? So Jessica, this will be something that will definitely be put on the retreat agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing that as a request. And I also, what I, what I would suggest is that maybe we can provide you some sort of proposed updates before that time so that we have a little, you have more time. I mean, obviously, it's not our intent to try to resolve these questions in this conversation with the time crunch that we have here. So I will request that it go on the retreat agenda, but also it sounds like that we will want to have continued conversations in in this context so that we can solidify what will go forth to the full board. And I I know we only have a couple minutes. I I don't want to lose sight also of that topic that Chris Clouette is working on. I don't know if you have a a momentary update or if we want to try to provide that at the beginning of, you know, our next committee meeting. I think that he's been working actively on that. And again, that's an action item, sort of, you know, a way that we're, we at the agency are trying to move forward with providing specific supports to attack some of the the achievement discrepancies and inequalities that that we see across the state.
Well, maybe if we, we do have, you know, not quite 10 minutes, but maybe we could hear from Chris to get a better idea of what the beginning works of this is that he's been given by the commissioner. I think that would be helpful for the group, knowing full well that it's going to be ongoing.
Good morning, everyone. I'm I'm happy to contribute in some small way to this meeting. We are working, the commissioner has asked me to work directly with West Ed, which is, you probably know, is one of the national laboratories. There are six national laboratories, West Ed is one of them for education. They're very progressive. I've I've had a number of meetings with them with the focus being on developing a what will be essentially a way for districts to determine their district health in a, in a variety of ways, but specifically through a lens of equity. So so that that is the focus. So for instance, a premise question is, are the children well? How do you know? And so it's the how do you know that becomes part of designing metrics for this? And it, so it it combines, it's in its early stages, and you will have input into this, of course. But in the early stages, it combines things that you would expect, like discrepancies in terms of discipline, discrepancies potentially in terms of attendance and or achievement, but also other ways of looking at tapping into the talents and 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 energy and enthusiasm that kids bring that sometimes we're not effectively tapping into right now. So it's a, it's a different way. It's, it's a little different than the than the indicators that we use to measure districts already. It it looks more at equity issues with some subtlety involved in that. And and conversation with students to incorporate student voice into this model so that when the adults, you know, when the superintendent and and her staff are are looking at how they're going to fill this out or or think about it, the voice of kids will be part of that.
Well, that's going to be most important now as we start reopening, that's for sure. And and a tool, I think, you know, board members that have been on for a while, a tool that we really need, we've seen many times that people have come before the board with various situations in their districts. And this would be a nice thing to have, that I like that, the district health tool to to guide to, so we don't have our students falling in the cracks that we see sometimes that parents or community members bring to our attention when they come in front of the board.
Absolutely, so I look forward to, you know, through the commissioner, bringing more developed plans to you for discussion.
Chris, for the, for the, the, the work that you're doing, I think it's referred to as the district health as opposed to just the student health. You gave an example of student, but is there, are there also components that are looking at the, for lack of any other term, sort of the the culture or the environment? So looking at, at teachers, staff, you know, et cetera, within the, within the broader?
Yes, that, that, thank you for raising that. So for instance, are you, it, it, would it be fair to infer that you're referencing things like implicit bias and that sort of thing that could have an impact on students not realizing their potential because they're, they're sort of boxed into a situation where they're not allowed to flourish? Yeah, so, so, yes, so absolutely, there, there will be a tool involved with this so that staff can really reflect on these components of, you know, of of what it means to be an educator in Connecticut in the year 2020, vis a vis these issues of of equity, which are, which, as you all know, and you wouldn't be on the board if you didn't feel this way, I'm sure. They, you know, these issues are are related to racial and ethnic, but also gender and and other factors that are involved with implicit bias and basically, you know, exclusion versus inclusion of how we work with our students.
So I apologize, but I do need to interrupt just because we're going to need to start transferring over. I know people have to go to the full board and our, so do our IT folks providing us support. But thank you so much. And again, I, my intent would be that this is a continuing conversation as long as it's, you know, on your agenda, Eric, Chair Benham, I, you know, today, we're always going to have things that kind of we need to to look at, like the counseling framework on sort of a certain time schedule. So again, I hate for people to feel pressed for time. But I will also ensure that Anne Marie and the commissioner are aware of our interest in continuing these conversations with the full board at the retreat and maybe putting a little bit more sort of meat on the bones as to next steps in this, in this area.
Yeah, this will give the board members a glimpse of what we're working on, certainly not what in our entire work, so I thank you for that. With that said, an IT probably panicking back there, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, we'll see you in a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you in a couple.